Can we have the roll call, please?
Brett Beliveau.
Here.
Sarah Jenna.
Here.
David Bowns.
Here.
Dave Broughton.
Yeah.
Jay Forrester.
Here.
And Peter Burnett.
Here.
Absent is Charlie St. Clair. Mike Delavecchia. Edward Bonas.
Claudia.
And Claudia Marchison.
Marchison.
And I, Robert Moore, will be doing the minutes. And with us tonight is Dean Trefethan, the Planning Director.
Thank you, thank you very much. We'll be here all week. Any objection to accepting the minutes from the May 7 meeting? Which we have all... Sensing that all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, so minutes are accepted. We are going to start things off here tonight with another riveting presentation regarding the zoning amendments. These are the amendments that are necessary to implement the new urban commercial zoning district. And we'll turn it over to the Director of Planning, Mr. Trefethan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the Chairman just said, the proposal for the urban commercial zone, which is consolidating several zones of the downtown area into one zone, is before the City Council at this time. You guys approved it and forwarded it to them at your last meeting. To recap, the highlights of that are, in addition to encompassing the traditional downtown area and the commercial zones that are along Court Street and Union Avenue, including the Lakeport area, are encompassed into one zone. And the definitions for professional, business central, business central industrial, and downtown river will go away as all those zones are completely encompassed in the new proposed urban commercial zone. As we go through, staff and I have gone through the entire zoning chapter. There are a number of little places where some of these zones just mentioned pop up in the language, and that's the housekeeping item that we need to take care of. I don't see that this changes anything or affects the implementation of the urban commercial zoning district when the City Council, assuming the City Council approves it. But they need to be taken care of just to remove any ambiguity that may arise from these. So I will quickly go through them of what the proposed amendments would be. And these are scattered throughout the entire zoning ordinance. So Section 17, which is the wetlands conservation and water quality overlay district, we're going to just, we're going to change the term downtown riverfront district with shoreline frontage on the Winnebago River from the Mesa Street Bridge to the river's entrance to Winnis Guam. This is the area of the shorefront that was encompassed in the downtown riverfront district, which has some special connotations, including in this particular section, it is exempt from the DES shoreland regulations. So we want to make sure that we preserve that.
May I ask a question?
Yep.
Why aren't we doing it from... Oh. We are, excuse me. I'm Mr. Brett. I take my question back.
Okay. So the next one is, under definitions, 22.3, the infill rehab and reuse, again, with this reference to the professional, the DR, and the BCI zone. And we'll remove those and just put in the reference to the UC zone. Oops, wrong way. Sorry. And then we have multiple uses on a lot of record. Good evening, Representative St. Clair. Again, reference to professional, BC, BCI, and take those out and put in the UC. Minimum lot size. You can see the list under 1, 2, Section D there, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. This relates to not lot sizes, but rather the actual building, buildable area on a lot. So you may have a lot that's 20,000 square feet, but there may be some wetlands in the back of it, or it may have some steep slopes, or whatever it has on it. And you need to have X number of square feet of buildable area on the lot. And again, professional, BC, and BCI, and DR are going away. And so we're going to change that to, instead of five categories there, we're going to change that to three. And put the UC under the Section 3 of 3,000 square feet for a minimum buildable area. That's not a lot of space. It's inconceivable to me that someone's going to create a lot in what will be the urban commercial zone that has less than 3,000 square feet in it. It's just not, does not seem logical or practical to me. And if by chance, something really unusual happens, then they can always go get a variance to create a lot that meets this criteria. But I just don't see it happening. Minimum setback requirements, this gets a little trickier. Again, the reference to professional, BCI, and DR, and taking those out and putting it, the UC in. This is, this section is primarily used in what will become the urban commercial zone because it's already built up, it's already dense, there's already a lot of old buildings, and a lot of them don't conform. And so this section gives us kind of an out, so to speak. And then under Section F, again, removing downtown riverfront district and putting it urban commercial, but other than that, nothing changes there. Green space, again, downtown riverfront district to urban commercial district, and changing the amount of green space from 25% to 20%. The 25% that was formerly under the downtown riverfront district, I always felt was very unrealistic. There are very few lots that would meet that criteria today. Most of them, a lot of them have zero green space. So, and the same thing, but I, we went to the chart to see what the green space might have been in some of the other zones, and particularly the commercial zone. And the commercial zone is 20%. So that's why I'm proposing to change the 25 to the 20%, just to make things consistent and to go along pretty much with what we've had all along. I also want to point out to that, this is an existing provision, but if someone wants to provide public access, access or use of part of their property as part of a development, such as a patio, or a walkway, or someone wants to help us out with the riverwalk and allow sidewalk go across their property, we would not, we would allow 50% less green space to accommodate that hardscape that would result from that, feeling that it's a benefit overall to the city. Under residential uses, the cluster developments, again, taking out DR and putting in UC, although quite frankly, there are maybe one or two parcels of land that would be covered by the future UC district that would qualify for a cluster development. So it's not likely to be used, but just in case. Non-residential uses, again, taking out the downtown riverfront district, putting in urban commercial district, and changing the wording a little bit there to, what we're really trying to do here is protect the shoreline frontage on the Winnebago River as it passes through the downtown area. So just changing the wording a little bit there to reflect that goal. And Section F, under non-residential uses, again, downtown riverfront district to urban commercial. And I will tell you that underneath that, in Section H, there is a whole list of restrictions. I'll give you an example. If you're going to have a movie theater, then the screen needs to be indoors. If you're going to do research of any kind, it cannot involve animals. These are the provisions that already exist under Section H, and we're not removing any of them. So all the restrictions that have been in the downtown riverfront district from day one, we're going to just roll over into the urban commercial. I don't see there being any conflicts with any other special uses. So that is a whole series of zoning amendments. And at some point in time tonight, it would be great if the Board could, if you agree with all of them, or most of them, or some of them, take a vote to refer them to a public hearing at the July 2, the regularly scheduled July 2 meeting.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Part of the, we'll see whether it was... Had to do with it becoming effective upon the adoption of the ordinance, rather than usually when we record, when we send it, set it for public hearing, that phrases it? Is this something different? At the 235-35C.
Yep.
Well, that would, that would seem to me that that would be, we have, we move this for a public hearing, we have the public hearing, we send it to the council, the council does or does not have a public hearing, and then adopts it. And that's when it becomes effective. Am I wrong about that?
When the council adopts it, that's when it becomes effective, yes.
Okay.
Now, in the case of the urban commercial zone, if we want to make the suggestion to the council, when you address that issue next Monday, to delay the effective date to August 1, or...
Whatever the first, the first council makes.
Whatever you want, or even September 1. You could do that. And then by that time, we'd have all these, you know, through the process to go along with it. But as I said at the beginning, I don't see that there's any, any reason not to adopt the urban commercial zone with these, you know, contradictions.
Well, I'm not...
Because I know we can deal with them. And I don't see anything in the pipeline that is going to be popping up that is going to take effect and take advantage of this.
I'm going to go with your recommendations, since you, you're the expert, and I'm just the guy on the planning board trying to understand all this stuff. So, I was just curious about that. So is it your intention that we move this to a public hearing for the next meeting?
Correct.
And that if, after the public hearing, if the Board decides that we recommend it to the council, we send it to the council?
Correct.
For, that would be, this is for their August meeting, their first meeting in August?
Um, we could potentially hit the second meeting in July, but, you know, either way.
Alright. Thank you.
Thanks, Dean. Any other questions for Dean? Alright.
Is now the time to ask for a public hearing? Or do you want to do it?
Yep, yes, you could do that now. Yes, sir.
Actually, did you want to do it?
Yeah, let's schedule a public hearing at our next regularly scheduled planning board meeting.
Well, I was about to open a public hearing. I thought that's what you meant.
Pardon?
Don't we need a public hearing tonight?
No.
We don't?
Oh, not for this?
No.
No, you got to refer to the next meeting for a public hearing.
Alright, alright. I thought we were at 9.1, no, this is something different. Okay. My mistake. So, we're going to schedule it?
I move to schedule a public hearing on the greater downtown zones, urban commercial, for the next regularly scheduled planning board meeting, which will be in July sometime.
Okay. Is there a second? There's a second by Mr. St. Clair. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed? And it's scheduled. Thanks. Sorry about that. Alright. Looks like we have Outerbridge Drive, PL 2018 0036SU, AMD 1, Village 10.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, you need to do the public hearing now on performance zoning. That's next on the agenda.
Oh. Oh, alright. That was my question. I thought you said it was going to be the next one. So, before we get to Outerbridge Drive, is there anybody here, well, we're going to open the public hearing on the performance zoning. Is there anybody here that would wish to address the Board? Yes, come on up to the mic and state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, my name's Kimmon Colette, and I'm here to provide some comment on the proposed performance zoning in the northwest quadrant of the city. I'm still perplexed as a resident of Laconia why the timing of this is going on at this point in time. And the 2007 master plan mentioned that Laconia's natural and scenic resources, including lakes and rural areas, deserve Laconia's greatest protection. 2007 master plan, there's no such corresponding element in the, I would call it a rather crafty assembly of a vision and land use section that was done last year, and which seems to provide the genesis for making these changes. But as everybody knows, and this planning board has a lot of experience, a lot of knowledgeable people here, that in order to have an effective zoning ordinance, it has to have good scientific basis in the master plan. And that didn't happen, at least if it was, I must have been sleeping under a rock, because the 2007 master plan, which was a very well-written, big effort, that effort did not happen for what was passed last year. There's nothing written publicly on that. So when the comment comes out on the proposed change for the performance zone, that basically states that it's consistent with the existing master plan, I say that's a foul ball. There isn't any. And the heart and soul of the master plan really is intense public involvement, a real transparent process where you're, you know, the city's involved, there's a lot of advertising, there's a lot of outreach, to make people aware that, you know, we're interested in seeing if there's a, checking the temperature for, from what happened in 2007 to what's happening today in 2019. And if you don't have that, then, you know, how can you say you have a master plan? I think what you have are some, a thought piece as to how certain people might think the city ought to appear, especially in that area. But when you look at the future land use map, because I don't believe it personally that the people of Laconia have changed that much in 10, 12 years. Future land use map for 2007, the northern half of the city said these are the most fragile areas, the most scenic and fragile areas that we have in the city of Laconia. They ought to be preserved. The open space, the forests, the wetlands, the water bodies, all of those should be preserved. The master plan, so the update, whatever you want to call the two chapters that were written, I certainly can't say in any broad sense that it followed the fundamental tenets of good planning. We want good planning. I don't think this did. I don't think anybody here really seriously thinks that it does either. But I'm not here really to poke a lot of holes in that, I'm just trying to make some consistency there, to be able to provide, the master plan provides a scientific basis for your zoning ordinance. So in 2018, it shows a bunch of nodes, right? Nodal development, all in these fragile areas, particularly where the state school property is. Now, you don't have to be a rocket scientist to figure out, wow, state school property might be disposed, state of New Hampshire's still working on that, right? We really don't know what they're going to do. Be interesting to find out. Be real interesting to find out what they're proposing before you make any changes, before you open the gates to the corral and say, come on in and do whatever the hell you want to do, that might not really be what the people of the city of Laconia want. And that's why I'm here tonight, because I just feel strongly about that. I really feel strongly that unless that is done, I don't see, I think the whole thing is premature on those two counts. The lack of a real comprehensive sense of what the people of Laconia want in their city, how they want it to look. And secondly, you don't know what the heck's going on with the state. They're still working on it. There are a number of proposals, a number of thoughts that we've read about, but we really don't know what's going to be proposed, if anything. They might say, heck, you know, the idea of a prison, we still need that space, we still own that property. You know, then where are you? Are you, are the proposed performance changes that are being developed, perhaps even opening the door wider for them to maybe put a proposal like that together and to tone down any of the opposition that might come with such a proposal that I believe most people in Laconia don't want to see, you know, a permanent prison up there? So, I just think you guys are running way too fast on this proposed zoning change for the performance zoning. I feel a lot more strongly about that than what was just done for the urban corridor. I actually think that's probably not a bad idea. I think it's consistent with the 2007 master plan, how the city was envisioned, put the redevelopment in there, have higher density, put it down in the central, southern part of the city. But the northern part, I mean, that's our, that's our most precious open space we have left. And that's another reason I'm here. I mean, I'm not going to make any excuses for wanting to protect the environment a little bit, the little that we have here in the city. It's desirable. It's why people come here. It's our biggest economic driver. That's all I really have to say tonight, and I really hope that you do slow down, you don't approve it tonight, that you go through backup, you do the natural resource section, you do the community involvement process in particular. You ought to feel comfortable, you want to feel comfortable, knowing that the people in the city of Laconia had a chance to really engage in a really vibrant public involvement process. And if they came out and said, we like what the 2018 land use section is, future land use map, everybody had their chance to say that, you know, what they wanted to, and that's the, that's the majority of the people, and that's how the process should work. Democracy, and works that way. That's how it works best. Thank you.
Thanks. Questions for Mr.?
I don't have a question. I have a couple of comments. And I really appreciate the work you've done, Kim, over the years with respect to your efforts on the planning commission and everything you've done, so don't get me wrong. The problem with the 2007 master plan is that there was never any kind of a sync between the council and the planning board with respect to that master plan. So what happened is that largely it was ignored by the council and wasn't very effective. Not to say that it wasn't a good master plan or a bad master plan, it just wasn't an effective master plan. Over the course of the last at least three years, and maybe four, since I've been on the planning board, which is, this is my third term, and I forget when it began, but while Shayna Saunders was here, we began the process of rewriting the master plan. And we had multiple charrettes, multiple input from the public, multiple meetings and conferences in which we brought in experts from outside to run the conferences, to gather input from the, from the public. And a lot of the rewrite of the remaining portions of the master plan has already been done. So when you say we're a little bit ahead of ourselves, I guess my, my comment is, and again, I have a great deal of respect for you, my comment is, we've done a lot of the legwork with respect to the underlying stuff, with the underlying elements of the master plan. And you can go look at those rewrites, they are, they are posted on the website, are they not? Yeah. And, so, the, this, this council and this planning board have been making a concerted effort to communicate with each other. There have been multiple meetings of the master plan steering committee. We're going to have another meeting, UG, tomorrow night with respect to this. So this is a, an effort on both the planning board and the City Council to come to a consensus as to what Laconia's needs are, with lots of input from the public in terms of future development. And that's, that's just my comment. I guess I disagree that we're putting, we're putting the cart before the horse. I think we're doing it appropriately, with lots of thought, lots of rewrites and considerations. We've been doing this master steering committee for how long? This is our second year? For two years now. We meet once a month, sometimes a little less than once a month, but come to the meeting tomorrow night. We're having one at 5:30, Kim. Come and find out what we're doing and why we're doing it. So, I just wanted to respond to that again.
I think the intention is always good, right, Dave? What we, what we don't have is that written approved document. Now, because, you know, it's kind of like, there's a lot of, a lot of motion going on in the ocean, but there's not anything that's been finalized and presented. If all that was done, okay, why not have put that forward last year and say, this is our comprehensive master plan?
We made a decision, we made a decision to come up with a vision statement, to do the two things the statute requires, come up with a vision statement and a land use component. We decided, wait a minute, I, I, I get it. We made that decision to do that for a reason. That's what the statute requires, number one. And number two, we had done all the work on all the other sections, and we felt it would have been premature to put that, those, start putting those in place without the vision statement and the land use component. So, I know you and I disagree, and we'll probably continue to do that, and that's okay.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I just, I, listen, I'm here just to kind of express what the fundamental tenets of the planning process are, okay? And it sounds like you've done some of that, alright? But you didn't follow through and get it all done. And having, it sounds to me it's more of a political thing. If the planning board back in 2007 wasn't in sync with the City Council, and you're working very hard on that, that's good. I mean, I think, I think that has, that probably has, those bridges need to be established for effective, good government, good planning. But the fundamental responsibility, the number one responsibility of the planning board is to develop a comprehensive master plan for the community. And you did not do that. The master, with all due respect to everything that you said, alright? And we've been in many meetings together, planning regionally as well as in the city of Laconia. And with, you know, in regard with everything that you said, that the final, the final, the next step is to write down what all of these informational meetings revealed, put it forward, have it adopted, and then base your performance zoning and any zoning changes you want to make on that. And the city hasn't done that. And I, and I, and I tell you that if it were done, I don't think that the vision statement and the future land use map would look the way that this is. It looks like an expeditious way... It looks like an expeditious way to get to a result that was predetermined by a political process, absent any other word. And I, and I, and I just, I just, I just have, I've seen too many master plans that almost universal, you have a universal theme in them, which is the protection of vital natural resources for economic purposes and what have you. And this just steps all over that.
I, I get what you're saying. I do. And I just wanted to go on the record that I think we're doing it right. And I appreciate your comments and your, and your criticism.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kim. Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public that wish to be heard on this matter? Anyone else? All right, we'll close the public hearing then at 7:05. What is the pleasure of the board?
Well, I think we've done what we, we moved it to, moved the revisions to a, a public hearing. Now, I think we moved this. Don't we send this to the council now? Yeah. I move that we recommend these changes and send it to the council for their review and approval.
Please have a question.
Well, let's, do we have a second? It's seconded by Mr. Sinclair.
So, the council, the council can choose to have a public hearing, where this gentleman and others can come and express their approval or displeasure. He left, so I couldn't say that to him, but I'm figuring he must know that, I would hope.
Well, when it comes, when it comes to the council, I've always been, there's some people who want to forego the public hearing because the planning board has already had a public hearing. But I've always been an advocate for holding a public hearing. And I'm, I'm gonna be sure I make, I make that known for when this comes to the council. Because this is, this is some big changes we're doing. And the council ought to get the input from the public, like Mr. Colette, who, who I respect a lot. And they ought to hear that, you know? Maybe somebody disagrees with me. Maybe, you know, maybe, maybe some people on the council will disagree. So, I'll make that recommendation when it gets to the council, that we hold a public hearing on it, so.
I have a question. Where did it come from? Where, where did the idea of performance zoning? I admittedly am the new, newest member on the master plan steering committee. But I do recall it was first hearing of it while I was a member. So, if I understand Mr. Colette's comments correctly, he's saying there's a disconnect between the master plan and performance zoning. So, where did it come from?
I, I think during the various meetings that the master plan steering committee had, there was expressed the desire of what could we do differently to differentiate Laconia from any other community in terms of, of setting your course for the future. And this concept, whether you call it flexible zoning or whether you call it performance zoning, or whether you call it form-based zoning, or, you know, there's any, there's any number of, of terms and concepts. They're all essentially the same, and that is, instead of using your standard cookie cutter, you know, the setback is 15 feet and these are the list of uses that you can do, that there's another way of doing this. And, and that was the genesis of, of the thing. And the terms are, and like I said, you could use different terms and it amounts to the same thing. Elements of what could we do differently were brought up in the various meetings and charrettes and those kinds of things that were done in the 2015 through 2016 timeframe. You know, we had New Hampshire Plan come in and we did design charrettes and we had reimagine Laconia website and, and cellphone number that people could text to, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, there were, prior to I arrived, there were plenty of public input sessions of which the master plan steering committee, most of those members were around during those things and had partaken in them and were very aware of what was said and, and what the outcome of those things were. So, I, I don't, I, like counsel of bounds, I, I disagree with the assertion that we, that we did this in a vacuum and that, and that it was, you know?
Yeah, we didn't.
A lot of the work was, was done before I arrived. And we took that work and we built upon it and, and, and created the vision statement in the land use chapter.
Oh, I'm, as a member of that committee, I mean, I'm, I'm satisfied that it was well thought out and presented properly, thoroughly discussed. So, I have two questions then, because I'm still concerned about the assertion that we might be making mistakes. So, we might be, as a board, making mistakes. Could it be limited to a particular zone? And could it be adopted with a sunset provision? Meaning it would only, it was like a trial basis?
Right. As proposed right now, it is limited to the proposed urban commercial zone.
Right.
And the several parcels of property consisting of and surrounding the state school property.
Okay.
So, that's, so it's limited to those areas. You could at any time in the future change, you could expand the areas that performance zoning is applied to, or you could restrict it further, you know, i.e. remove some areas from its applicability.
Right.
I don't see any reason why you could not put a sunset provision in that. You certainly could propose that to the city council, and I don't see that as being an issue that...
Well, I don't want to send the council a mixed message either.
Requires it to come back here or anything like that. I mean, that, that's, I, I'll give you an example of a sunset provision that's, that's in the zoning ordinance right now, and that is the, the, and I, I hate to bring up this term, but it, it's very applicable. And that would be the, the urban renewal district ended its, its, its authority ended in 2005. And then there was a sunset date to that.
That long?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Right. But I mean, I'm, yeah, so you could, if you wanted to, you know, tag on the end of this or suggest to the council that, let's try this for five years, or let's try this for two years, or, and at any point in time, the council or the, or the planning board could recommend to do, you know, to extend it or to, or to, you know, repeal it. I mean, it's, it's, you know, the zoning ordinance is not a stagnant document.
Why don't we address that tomorrow night? Because I don't think we need to redo a whole public hearing if we're just gonna put in a sunset provision. Do you?
Well, I have a follow-up though on that. What if we just limited it to the new zone, the new commercial zone, for the time being? We can, we're free to expand it to the state school property after we find out what the state intends to do with it. I think that's a valid concern, isn't it?
I wouldn't be, we're only talking about a small parcel of land of the state school that's outside of the urban commercial zone. It's a small parcel. And we included it because it's kind of contiguous to the state school property and consistent with other property there. That's why we included it. It's not, it's not a huge chunk of land. It's, it's a, it's a narrow, it's a, it's a small piece of land that we've included because it's contiguous, and it makes sense to do it.
It's just that little...
But I, I'm not opposed to raising the concerns to the council if that's what you want to do. But I, I don't want to limit what we've got right now. I want to push this forward to the council.
I know you do, David. And I'm trying to give the board an opportunity to think that there are other options, because they weren't on the master plan steering committee. Mr. Bellemo.
The performance zone doesn't take anything away from the current zoning, correct? All it does is it gives us the flexibility.
That's correct.
That if someone wants to develop it outside of that and, and say, change a setback a little bit to allow for their development of it, they have to come through us anyway. This isn't opening the door for anything new, except giving us the flexibility to deal with developers in a favorable thing for the city.
Right.
So, part of it is, it's, I think it might be a misconception on the public that this is just taking away all the requirements in this. People have to come to us with what we deem to be an appropriate use of that land and I guess a valid reason for doing away with whatever it is in the zone that they want to do to develop that land, whether it's setbacks, buffers, whatever. So, it's not, it's not like we're just flinging the door open for a free-for-all at the state school. But I think in the long run, if that is part of it, then maybe a developer will get innovative and be able to say, hey, if I can get that property, why don't we try to do this? And then the door is open, the avenue for them to approach us, and we decide whether it's appropriate or not.
I mean, I mean, the, the, the current zoning, good, bad, or indifferent, but the current zoning for the state school property is RR1.
RR1, yeah.
Which, without variances or whatever, you could build two-acre lot houses.
It's a single family, yeah.
And the, the present thinking of the planning community as a whole across this country is the worst thing you can do to the environment is to do two-acre tract housing. From the standpoint of it completely disrupts any natural habitat for wild lives because of people's uses of fertilizer and everything else. It, it, it is very detrimental to any wildlife that may be in the area of these, of these houses. And it's much better to do a cluster-type zoning that allows large areas of open space to remain for wildlife to be able to migrate from one area to another. We've got a lot of state forests up in that area. To just take a swath of land and say, you know, all it is is houses now, would, would cut that migration off.
Right.
You know, the, the idea behind the performance zoning, especially at the state school, was to encourage economic development, to encourage approaches that RR1 wouldn't allow to encourage. And that's what the, the state committee, I forget the name of them, but that's what they're exploring, the different kinds of uses, from a sports field to hospice, to any number of different uses. And what they recommend, I, I don't know. And where they're gonna go with it, I don't know. But the performance zoning encompassing the state school says, you don't have to be restricted to RR1. Come in, give us your ideas, give us your thoughts. What do you want to do? You want to put a winery there? Great. Want to put a brewery there? Great. So.
And I feel like those are all things that we should be looking at as far as attracting younger families or job growth as well.
Or anybody.
That's true.
All right. Any further discussion? Sensing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising their hands. Opposed? Motion carries.
One, one opposition, right? You voted...
Yeah.
I just put a note taken over there.
So, this is going to the city council as-is? I'm just getting clear.
Yeah, yeah. That was, the motion was to send it to the city council as-is. Now, you mentioned the meeting tomorrow night, it's master plan steering committee?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I threw an email out there suggesting it, and I don't see that it got confirmed. But I just happen to be available, so.
Are we doing it?
I, I wasn't intending to, but we could. I haven't posted it or anything.
I said, well, it would be a great idea.
I thought it was scheduled.
Gary gave me a thumbs up, and that's all.
So, all I need to know is whether I'm coming here at 5:30 or 6 o'clock tomorrow night.
Has not been properly posted, so I don't think that we should do it.
I don't think so.
They're gonna tell 5:30, so you will be here by 6:00.
Okay. Thank you very much, everyone. Now, I believe at long last, we shall get to PL 2018-0036-SU, Outer Bridge Drive, Village Number 10. New village in South Town. The applicant requests amending the June 5th approval to allow phasing. And we need to address acceptance first before we get to approval.
Yeah, I move to accept the application as complete and begin the review process.
Second. Is acceptable to staff? All those in favor signify by raising their hands.
Could, could I ask a favor? It's not a favor, but because we're telecasting these things, could I ask that we do a voice fake instead of raising your hand? Because that sometimes gets confusing.
Well...
You see your hands, you know exactly how people are voting.
Okay. I'm just making the suggestion.
I, I did just the voice votes when I started, and I think I was directed back to raising hands, so.
Let's do a vote.
Huh? Let's do a vote? You're out of order. That's it.
My dismissed.
Thank you, Mr. Bellemo.
6:30, you missed it.
Hi.
Solidarity.
You got it?
Yep.
Should we bring it down here?
I don't know if everybody even needs to see it, but they do all screwing around.
Oh, you went to all that trouble to pin it up there.
I know.
It's gonna be on TV and everything, you know?
I appreciate that. I wanted to make my debut by having a...
That is, Mr. Bellemo doesn't knock it over. He might.
Camera, don't go that far.
We didn't leave enough room here. There you go.
Takes marks down on the floor if they make, if they don't act.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Bellemo.
I can't see it. Could you move, no, I'm only kidding.
Go on the screen.
Go on the screen. Would you ever care to identify yourself for the record?
My name is John Bernard, and I'm here to address this to be done in two phases for MJ Pharma states. One road has already been built. And the two phases that we suggest is this one road, and this would be the second phase. It's already been approved. It's a, I think it's more of a good housekeeping type of thing that we're doing at this point as far as moving forward here with this. So, I'm just gonna ask if there's any questions.
All right. Are there any questions for the applicant about phasing? Doesn't change any, the project or any other aspect rather, other than the, the timing of development, correct?
Right. Basically, it comes down to affordability. Instead of doing everything at once, you get to break it into two sections. Makes it much more affordable for us.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? All right. Public hearing? We'll call the public hearing to order on this 7:23 PM. Are any butters here that would like to speak about the application on Outer Bridge Drive? Any members of the public? Sensing none, we'll close the public hearing 7:24 PM. And what is the pleasure of the board? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve the allowing of the phasing of this Outer Bridge Drive, Village Number 10, PL 2018-0036-SU. What is that? AMD 1?
Yes.
For Outer Bridge Drive. Any recommendations from the council, from you?
Well, we have a, a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Man, I forgot to ask staff about this one, so.
We, we don't have a whole set of recommendations on this, other than we, we have no objections to doing this.
That's what I thought. Okay. All right. Motion's been made and seconded.
This is for the granted conditional approval with your recommendations, right?
I mean, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Just the planned revisions and, and, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? All right. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I expected. Next time I come back here for whatever, it goes just as quickly too.
Well, we've been known to shatter people's expectations, so don't get your hopes up. All right.
It won't take a year.
Our next agenda item is PL 2019-0067 CUP. It's 526 Main Street, Number 2. And it's a proposal to put in a tra- a school trade vocational use, um, for CNA now. And we need a motion to accept before we get to it. Do we?
I move to accept this application as complete.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising their hand. Opposed?
We needed that.
Motion carries. All right, we'll hear from the applicant. Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
This is Carrie Dutton.
Thank you, Carrie. So tell us about this.
All right, so I'm gonna be, um, opening a school in, um, the property on 526 Main Street. It's a school to, um, provide students an opportunity to learn how to be a nursing assistant.
Excellent. 526 Main Street is which building?
Big one, Soya's Jewelry.
Right, right, right next to Soya's Jewelry.
Right. So in the.
Used to be the computers, computer stuff?
Um, the unit I'm in actually was a.
Formal wear.
Formal, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Oh, so that, that's the same building that there already is a school in, right?
Yes, there is.
It's for the, uh.
Empire. But we need a CUP?
Yes, under four. Uh, currently, because we don't have the.
Performance zoning.
Performance or the UC, uh.
District.
Zone yet. Um, the table of use says that this type of, uh, activity is a conditional use approval.
Okay.
And that all activity needs to be inside and not visible from the outside, which applicant is very aware of.
And you've got curtains and everything, right?
Yes.
All right.
You're ready to rock and roll, right?
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you. We'll, we'll hold a public hearing on that? Oh, did you have a question?
Sure. So how many students do you expect to have at any one time?
All right, the Board of Nursing, uh, New Hampshire State Board of Nursing, um, will only allow eight students at a time. So that's the maximum.
And that's per like a semester or a year or?
Right, per session. Um, so the session runs about anywhere from eight to 12 weeks. It's a part-time program, evenings.
So it's only at evenings?
Evenings, yes.
Oh, okay.
And, uh.
Kind of takes away my other question, I don't need to ask it then.
Parking and all that.
Right, yeah, it works out good for that. Yeah.
People have to ask.
We're all dying to know what it is.
Oh, no, well, you. Silly.
Well, the thing that's, that's, it's just struck me as strange is that the Board of Nursing will only allow her to train eight people at a time for a job that is in high demand.
Exactly.
So, what are you charging, like 20,000 a student?
I wish.
Yeah, well.
Is that only eight people because there's only one teacher?
Uh, it's across the board. It's just, the maximum is eight. Um, we're working to improve things at the State Board of Nursing, but that takes a long time.
Of course it does.
Yes.
Well, being a ra- a regulatory board ourselves, we, we stand for the proposition that it always makes things better to regulate, uh, economic conduct. Um, that's sarcasm, David, in case you didn't pick that up. All right, are there any other questions for the applicant? Sensing none, ma'am, if you have a seat, I'm gonna ask the, uh, if there's a public hearing. Anybody, uh, care to be heard on this application for a CNA school right down the street? Anybody going once, going twice, going three times? The public hearing is closed and opened at 7:29. Um, what is the pleasure of the board?
Staff, anything?
Oh, I keep forgetting you because I, I know you're just like.
You can see our list of, uh.
Right.
We, we have, uh, reviewed the application and, and you can see our comments under compliance review. We have new issues. The applicant has new issues. And, uh, we recommend that the, grant the, uh, conditional approval with the very brief criteria that's attached.
Right. Let me, sorry, but I couldn't add. All right, so, any questions for the staff? All right, would someone care to make a motion?
Yeah, okay, go ahead, David. We got somebody here. I was gonna do it, but David's gonna do it.
All right, David.
With respect to PL 2019-0067 CUP, the proposal for a school trade vocational use, uh, I, uh, move that we, uh, grant conditional approval with, uh, the following, uh, conditions as outlined in the planning report, Roman numeral one and Roman, Roman numeral two. Generally applicable to all, to all applications.
Thank you, David. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Broughton. Is there any discussion on the motion? Sensing none, all those in favor signify by raising their hands. Opposed? Good luck. Motion carries. All right. I see that, uh, 10.1 is been withdrawn, the application, so 10-2 is Lexington. So PL 2019-0029-SP and 0070 CUP, 33 Lexington Drive. It's a proposal to construct, uh, 7,975 square foot building. And they need a waiver for wetland mapping.
This would be acceptance with the exception of I would like the board to take a separate vote on the waiver for the wetland mapping.
All right, so.
To that, I will explain.
So we're dealing with acceptance and then scheduling the public hearing for July, right? So is there a motion to accept out there?
I move that.
And seconded by Mr. Broughton, made by Mr. Bounds. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by raising their hands. Opposed? Our motion carries. We need a motion on the waiver. You want to explain the waiver for us?
Well, um, this, this, uh, lot has been developed, uh, previously. Um, there is a foundation still on the property, and there has been considerable grading that was done many years ago. Uh, there has been some growth up through, uh, the gravel, what was the gravel parking lot. Behind this property is a, what is now a wetland. It was, uh, created as a drainage ditch for the uphill properties of the, of the industrial park.
Right.
But as time goes on, you know, the catanine tails grow and the et cetera, et cetera. And so it's technically what was 40 years ago constructed as a drainage ditch is now classified as a wetland. It is very well delineated. It is, it is still truly a, a ditch in the land with what was the gravel that was what is, what was inside. The now ditch is now just thrown on both sides, and so there's like natural berms and et cetera, et cetera. So this is very well delineated. And there is no question where it is or what the, uh, boundaries of it are. So for that reason, uh, the applicant has asked for a waiver to do the wetland mapping, and we have agreed that that is appropriate under, for, under the circumstance.
So the waiver right now just relates to the requirement that they do a wetland mapping, right? And we know where it is, right?
We know where it is, and we know where the 50-foot wetland buffer boundary is.
We're not waiving any buffers or boundaries or anything like that.
Okay. Mapping. This is the property that's adjacent to the store that's on the corner, right?
Correct, I mean.
Just up slope.
Yep, just up slope. There is, uh.
And there's.
There's a parking lot already existing, and they're gonna reuse some of that parking lot. And, uh, it's, uh, the form, there was a, uh, health club, a gymnasium there of some form, which burned down and.
So what's left is a foundation and a slab, or just a.
Just a foundation.
Okay. And they'd like to make use of that, obviously.
Reuse part of it, yep.
And this property is bounded on the north by a pretty sizable wetland, right? There's a swamp, there's a, where the power lines are. It's just to the north of this? Am I thinking about that, right?
I don't think so. There are some.
Or is it too up slope?
Off of this, off of this property, yes.
Right. I know the store abouts it.
Yep.
Right. I wasn't sure how, what the elevation is on this.
Yep.
Okay, so does everyone know what we're talking about? We're basically just saying you don't have to draw the ditch in on the plan?
Got it, we got it.
Basically, or mark the, the ditch as the boundaries of the wetland. Um, it won't affect the, the future control of the boundary in any way, no. All right. Yes.
I have a question. It still needs to be on a map somewhere as designated as something. They just don't have to pay a wetland scientist to come in.
To actually come in and delineate each boundary, right?
Not that someone can come in later and say, oh, that's just a ditch.
Yep.
Identify all the species.
Yep.
Yeah, it's a pretty intensive process.
Yes.
So, and he's already identified cattail, so in his professional recommendation. He has cattails in there.
That's the extent of my knowledge of wetlands.
Cattails are a pretty good indication that there may be wetland on the property. Since they like it wet. All right, any other discussion or any questions? All right. We have a motion.
The motion is just for the waiver of the wetland, right?
This is the waiver, yeah. Waiver of the wetland mapping.
Formal, formal wetland.
Yeah, uh, uh, like, if I screw up, let me know. I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Okay, so, uh, make, make a motion that PL 2019-0029-SB, 0070 CUP, wetland. We're gonna, uh, waive the, uh, requirement for wetland mapping.
Second. All right. Any discussion? Sensing none, all those in favor is, uh, raise your hand. Opposed? And the motion carries, the waiver carries. Thank you. All right, we're moving around. Oh, we need to schedule a public hearing for July. Was that part of the motion? Should that have been part of the, the motion, or?
I, I believe David did make that.
Okay. So it's gonna be heard on July 2nd. Thank you. 10.3 is PL 2019-0063-SB. 59 Doe Ave. I have no idea what craft beer exchange means, so we're gonna listen to that. It's a proposal to open a craft beer exchange brew pub and retail facility from March to November. And, uh, is it just the waiver that we're looking at here, or?
Uh, you can do that. You need to accept the application, and then we'll deal with all that at the next meeting.
So we're gonna, we're just gonna accept the application and schedule it for a public hearing.
Public hearing July 2nd.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Motion to accept, anybody? Mr. St. Clair has made the motion to accept the application.
Want to read this thing again?
I don't. No.
I'll just make, make a motion, we accept, uh, the, uh, application for, uh, PL 2019-0063-SB.
Amen.
Doe Ave, 59 Doe Ave.
Is there a second by Mr. Broughton? All right. Staff is all right with this?
Yep, it's ready to go.
Part is acceptance. So all those in favor signify by raising their hand. Opposed? All right, the application has been accepted and scheduled for public hearing July 2nd. Let's talk about the waiver.
Waiver for the sidewalks?
Yeah, you can do that at the next meeting. I would rather do it at the next meeting.
You would, okay. All right. Understood. Um, 59, is that what it is? 59 Doe Ave. Doe Ave is the, is the street that's roughly parallel to Tower Street, straight up the hill.
So you're talking about at the top of the hill?
At the very top, is this adjacent to the old Brickyard property?
Right on the corner.
It's got a curved.
Yes.
The house is curved.
Yes.
There's a farm there, right?
The top of Doe Ave. So if you go to the top of Towers, through the Cumberland Farms.
Yeah.
You just go to that side street that goes, crosses Tower Street, keeps going, then down. It's that place right there.
It's right next to the back entrance to Brickyard, where you would've gone in the.
Tennis courts and all that stuff there.
Yeah, I know the property. Okay. Interesting.
I can see the barrels rolling down the hill.
And, and, and that's.
The barrels you.
Roll down the, roll the barrels down the hill. There will be no barrel rolling.
What's, what's the issue with that, sidewalks?
Sidewalks.
Yeah, no sidewalks in that area.
There's no sidewalks in that area.
Zoning, they would be required to build sidewalks. So they're, they're asking for a waiver.
Okay. So we can deal with that at another time.
Right, next week, we'll talk about how many feet they are from the nearest sidewalk and all that stuff. Okay.
Can you walk around with me next week and I can just, I'll say, talk to him and you just.
Yeah, yeah, we'll go up and take.
Oh, I'll be out there next week, or, starting tomorrow.
I need you next to me, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Stand next to him, he's dangerous during that week. All right, is there any new business? Is there any old business? I don't see any in here. Planning Department report, we've been dying for this. No, we're not.
I, I don't have anything formal prepared, other than, uh, as I'm sure you're aware of, there is an effort in, uh, in the community uh, to, i- in response to the, uh, news about the St. Joseph's Church property to, uh, create an historic district and historic district commission. Uh, the matter is before the city council presently. Um, I want you to be aware of it and try to follow along if you can, because I, I, I believe that they will be making the recommendation.
So there's gonna be two things that are gonna happen. Um, we're gonna have a regular city council meeting next Monday. On Tuesday, we've scheduled another hearing for, um, uh, the Government Operations and Ordinance Committee, which is the committee that would make recommendations with respect to what is called, um, historic, an historic commission. The establishment of a historic commission. So there's going to be a, uh, special meeting of the committee on Tuesday to make recommendations, to get a formal proposal for an historic commission. If the committee recommends that to the council, there's currently a proposal to have a, uh, special meeting for the, that Tuesday. So 10th, 11th, 12th, 13th, whatever that Thursday is, a special meeting of the city council, at which time they would take up, um, the historic commission, uh, proposal. And the purpose of that would be so that they could then recommend it to the planning board to get it on the planning board agenda as soon as possible, which may or may not be the next regularly scheduled meeting of the planning board in July. And we, we may ask to schedule a special meeting of the planning board to deal with that.
In July? A special meeting in July?
No.
No.
For the planning.
Before the July.
Before the July meeting.
Before the July meeting. Before the scheduled, we, I, and I don't know how that's gonna go, but.
Just don't do it during motorcycle week, please.
Yeah.
What, what is, why is this being?
Tell me the day that's most inconvenient for you and that's the day I'll schedule it, okay?
No doubt.
So.
Counselor Browns, why is this being fast tracked like this? Is, what's the deadline for?
Okay, it's being fast tracked for this reason. Um, in order for, in order, in order for the historic commission to have any teeth at all, to deal with a demolition permit, um, that would be proposed by the Diocese of Manchester for the Saint Joseph's Church, that, that ordinance has to be in place. So, at, at this point in time, the diocese could come in and make a request for demolition, for the demolition of the tru- of the church, and the only, uh, uh, the only impediment would be the review by the, um, historical, whatever it's called.
Heritage commission.
Yeah, that, and that, and those folks have no teeth, they can just make recommendations. Um, and so it would be, uh, in order to get, in order to put some teeth into it, if the commission were established prior to the application for a demolition permit, then they would have to go through the process of a demolition permit. And that happened yesterday. It was exciting all the way around, from four o'clock in the afternoon until eight thirty at night.
What happened yesterday, your meeting?
We had a budget meeting, but we scheduled, uh, a Government Operations Committee meeting on this proposed historic commission prior to the budget hearing. And it was well attended, everybody doesn't wanna see Saint Joe's raised.
Or other buildings, I mean, it's not just for Saint Joseph's Church.
I, 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 let's not go there, Charlie.
Well, I just want that to be out there.
Okay, alright, or other buildings, there's no other proposals to tear down any other building.
At this time.
At this time. Okay, so that's, that's how it came about, that's what's going on. And so stay tuned, because there's gonna be a, a committee meeting next Tuesday. Um, uh, and I think it's seven, I, I don't even know what time it is. Um, and the committee will then make recommendations to the council. There may be a special meeting of the council on Thursday, to make the recommendation that this go to the planning board, so that the planning board can take action on it, um, and send it out for a public hearing. Because once it's sent out for a public hearing, that stops the clock. And Saint Joe's can't come in with a proposal to raise it without going through the historic commission. And the historic commission has some teeth, and one of them is to deny a demolition permit. And that demolition permit, ha- that denial of that demolition permit has to be honored until everybody goes through their appeal process. So there's no recourse, it's gonna be, if they come in with a demolition per- permit, the historic commission, if it's established, denies it, they've gotta go for, uh, a review, they'll go to this V B A for a review. Everybody gets unhappy with that, or somebody gets unhappy with that, it'll appeal to the Superior Court. If everybody gets unhappy, if somebody gets unhappy with that, it'll go to the Supreme Court. So that's the whole process, that's why it's happening. And it's an emotional, passionate, uh, subject for a lot of people in Laconia. And I don't blame them, I mean, this is a church, it's been, it's here since the early nineteen hundreds. It's like, I grew up, that was, that's the downtown, that's.
Long overdue, in my opinion.
Well, notwithstanding the fact that I've always thought it would be nice to have a historic district, this ain't the way to do it.
Well, it may or may not be, but that's the way it's gonna happen, Peter, you, you can, there's nothing you can do about it. You can, when it comes before the planning board for approval for the historical commi- of the historical commission, you can oppose it then. And there'll be hundreds of people out there and in the streets, and you can say, I oppose it. And you, you can do anything you want, but right now you have no say in it. There's, there's no say that the planning board has.
You know, I could find those comments out of order, David, but I'm not gonna do that.
Why would my co- comments be out of order?
Well, the point I'm simply trying to make is this is the planning board. What the city council may or may not approve or recommend or refer back to the planning board will be for the planning board to decide, right?
Right.
Alright, second, uh, historic district has been proposed in the past, it's a great idea. And the way to do it, wouldn't it be to have a process for delineating what properties will be included in it? I mean, this sounds like spot zoning to me. Why didn't we, why didn't we create, why didn't the city council rush to create a historic district when they were gonna tear down Hathaway House? I, the answer is because I think it was proposed and the city council was not so inclined. That's what I'm, I mean, I'm, I, I, I would hate to see that thing torn down, alright? I think it's a beautiful building. But, that, we're enacting, the, the idea is to enact a piece of legislation to, to affect, to create a district that's gonna, I, I mean, is it gonna be the only building in the district, David? Is that what the will of the council is?
No, the proposed district runs from, um, behind the railroad station, up behind the library, down to Messer Street, um, down that side of Messer Street, crosses over on the, as you're looking at the post office, on the left-hand side of the post office, goes behind the post office, comes down over to Beacon Street East, runs down to the sidewalk, and then captures the old tavern building. It crosses Main Street and then captures the, um, the, the former restaurant, the church, and the congregational church, so there's a proposed district, um, that, uh, that is part of this proposal. And there would have to be, it would have to be part of any ordinance that we wanted to adopt. And there would have to be lots of language about why we're doing it, uh, to, for the, for all the reasons that you establish historic, historic divisions. But I, I again say, and I, I don't think I'm out of order, but that's not, that's not the issue now. I'm just telling you what's, what's coming, and here, here's what's coming. What's coming is a special meeting of the, uh, committee, um, uh, a possible recommendation to adopt the com- the, uh, the historic commission, a special meeting of the city council, recommending that it be adopted, that will stop the clock. And then it'll come before the planning board, at which time you can voice your displeasure with the way this was done. So, there, I'm just telling you what's going on.
Alright, well, thank you. What is the process of, for a delineating, uh, district? I see six seventy three four is the, is the commission itself, which has yet not been populated, right?
The, uh, so the, the, the subcommittee and then the city council next week will be presented with, uh, the boundaries of the district and the language of a proposed ordinance that would create the historic overlay district. And subsequently, you need to appoint a commission to administer that, that district. Uh, the idea of having a combination historic district and heritage commission has also been, uh, floated, and that may be part of it, or maybe that's one of the amendments, uh, that this board might want to do, I don't know.
We would make them same, same body.
We could, we could, uh, you don't have to, but you could. Um, the, the, the key here is that once the planning board, uh, posts it for a public hearing, which would be the potential purpose of a special meeting of the, of the planning board. Once you post it for a public hearing, it in effect becomes part of the zoning ordinance until it is either adopted or it is not adopted. So similar to any other zoning ordinance pr- change proposed, uh, once this board posts it to a public hearing, anybody that comes in with a, a development plan or, or, or site plan or whatever, and in this case, a demolition plan, would be subject to the new regulations.
There's no such application pending at this time.
There is no application at this time.
And you're saying that the, the scheduling of our public hearing would actually, um, put a hold on, uh?
Everything. Yes. Now, there's a, a considerable process after that, that, that needs, needs to occur. And, uh, it wants, once you have posted it for a public hearing, I don't think that there's any s- super hurry after that.
You see where I, what I mean when I made the analogy to, to spot zoning, right? There's a, a landowner out there that allegedly wishes to demolish the property that, that, that they own. And if we do this thing, we are precluding that landowner from making that use of their property. That to own is the right to destroy, right? I mean, I, as much as I, I don't, as much as I would hate to see it torn down.
Point of order.
Well, could you?
Point of order, and let, and let, just hear me out. You know, this is a volatile subject in the city of Laconia, uh, among the residents and various stuff. Um, from my perspective, the planning board doesn't have enough information to call it spot, spot zoning or anything else. And I would just prefer that we weigh in on this when it actually comes before us and we have the information, rather than create a whole new, uh, subculture of what's, what's going on. That's just my comment, you can ignore me if you like, but I, I don't, I don't wanna create any more controversy than we need to. It's gonna be controversial, yes, it looks like it's coming, yes. Uh, you'll be prepared for it and we'll be prepared to do it. But I, I don't, I don't think we should be chiming in on what it is we're going to do, or what it is we're not going to do, and how we think of it at this point in time, with all due respect, Mister Chairman.
I just wanna make sure that the matter gets a full and fair hearing, that's all I want.
Okay.
Mister Belllo.
Just for, for my sake, if a historic district is established, for, whether it's for this purpose, to save this one building or not, everything within that district then has to go through extra hoops for any alterations or development or anything else, right?
Yes.
Yes.
And there are private, a number of privately owned properties.
On the wording of the ordinance, of how, uh, stringent, you, you want the ordinance to be. In, in some communities, it is the, uh, the oversight and the, um, powers, the regulatory, uh, abilities of an historic district commission are, are very, uh, stringent, very rigid. And, um, and in other communities, it, it's more of a overall concept as opposed to, you know, instead of saying, okay, you, you can't have.
Shades in your window.
You can't have shades in your window, it's, it's more of, we want the windows to look a certain way. You know, what you put up in them is up, up to you. So I mean, so there is, there's various degrees of, of authority that, that you could, uh, either implement or not implement, as the case may be. I mean, the, 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 there are examples of, you know, right down to the finish of your doorknob in the color of the paint, as, as those. On the other hand, there are plenty of historic districts where it is more the, the architectural style and the concept of the, of the, you know, original building that is wha- what wants to be preserved, as opposed to, is the door red or is it blue and, and do you have, you know, uh, you know, window boxes or not, you know, the, whatever the case may be.
And the only requirement might simply be that there be a public hearing, rather than.
Right.
Because normally there wouldn't be on a demolition permit, right?
Well, no, there isn't a heritage commission there is now, they, they do have public hearings.
They have a public hearing.
They just don't have the teeth to say, okay, we, well, we're not gonna allow it. But, but on, you know, i- i- only from talking to people, but it seems like the reality is, is that they're just trying to save some buildings, not just this one building, but several buildings in this, in this district.
Right.
That's all.
Are there any others threatened at this time?
No, but we don't know what the future holds. Who would have thought five years ago, we'd be dealing with any of this stuff, so, but it's good, yes.
No, I understand that, Counselor Browns, i- it, does it, has the council given any thought to who the members of the commission will be?
Pardon?
Well, it says under six seventy three four one, that the, um, historic district shall consist of not less than three members and not more than seven, who'll be, uh, appointed in a manner prescribed by the local legislative body, that'd be the city, the city council. Normally, you bring the applicants in, you, you know, you have a process that takes a month or so.
It, it doesn't matter how long we take to appoint commissioners, once, once the, once the planning board sends it to a public hearing, that freezes it. Everything else follows, there are proposals for people to be on it, Charlie's, um, um, suggested names to be on this commission. Um, there's a, a number of things, but that's all in the future.
My question is, will the usual process be followed?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, alright.
It just had to throw me under. It just had to do it.
Alright.
So I just have one quick question.
Oh, no.
I'm new in this city, do we have a his historical, uh, society in this city?
There is an historical society.
Wouldn't they be in charge of this?
No, they're not.
They're not, so they don't pick and choose which buildings are historical?
No, there's no, it currently isn't any way to restrict.
They have, they have.
Well, that's not, I, I just wanna say, the Heritage Commission spent a lot of time looking at buildings all around the city.
Right, not just one location.
No, no, not just one location, and they've actually.
Designated.
Designated certain buildings, of which several have disappeared. But not because of their lack of trying to bring it to the attention of the council, to the public. Um, so this, this, yes, there's a lot of buildings that have been looked at, not just in their zone. So there's been work done on that, but they've never had the teeth, they were never given that, um, right to do that.
Well, yeah, so I look forward to the public hearings and city council, that's for sure. Uh, we're not being asked to schedule a special meeting.
Not at this time, no, I just want you to be aware of what's in the wind and what may or may not, uh, occur.
Okay, alright, is there anything further on this matter?
I, I just, I just wanna finish that statement, because you're probably not the only one in the city that thinks that. But that Heritage Commission literally hired people with their limited budget to go out and do these studies of all these different buildings, including architecture, history of the building. And they went over to the, uh, Registry of Deeds over there and looked through all this stuff, and they spent a lot, a lot of time in that, several years, so.
Are you saying in the process of, of defining the district, or?
Defining, defining both districts and buildings.
So they did an inventory, is that what you're saying, basically?
Exactly what they did, yeah.
So they did an inventory, and there is an existing inventory?
Such as it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, I mean, Heritage Commission is active and meets monthly and.
Yep.
And under the criteria of the demolition right now of any building that's fifty years or older, they review the demolition permits and, and approve some and, and express their displeasure over others, depending on the circumstance.
And I'm sure with them in the public hearing.
There've been mistakes made, there've been mistakes made prior, uh, where, uh, I'm thinking of the church up there at Weers Beach, uh, on eleven B or whatever it is there, where they're building houses now. That, that church met the requirement to be reviewed and go through a demolition process, but because there was a mistake made when the church was actually built, that slipped through the cracks.
Same as.
Yeah, that's it, thank you, and just like that, it disappeared, so without any public input at all.
Yeah.
It wouldn't have mattered, but nonetheless.
Yeah. Okay, um, anything further on the reports, anything further from staff?
Oh, I gotta, I gotta give you a liaison report from the council.
Alright. I thought we just did.
We did it, we did it on, uh, wait, I, I don't mean to draw this out, but I, I just want you to know that this is coming. Um, we've been working on a short-term, uh, housing proposal, um, to deal with Airbnbs and all of that stuff. Um, and the council, it's been in council committee. Um, yeah, we sort of finalized the final product that's gonna go back before the council committee with a likely recommendation that it be sent to the planning board, that it be approved by the council and sent to the planning board for review. Uh, I don't wanna go into the details, it's really, it's really kinda complicated and, um, it's not here yet, but it will be, it will be coming. Uh, I, I think, it depends upon when we can get a committee meeting established on that, and, God, that committee is so busy these days, it's driving me crazy. So, um, so that, it depends on when that occurs. The committee will then make a recommendation, um, to the council as to whether to adopt it or not. The council will then make, uh, uh, take a vote as to whether to send it to the planning board for your review, because we can't adopt the ordinance, uh, without planning board, uh, without, without going through the planning board first. So, that'll be coming.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, I guess we're done then. Anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting to second.
Mr. Brown, and seconded by Mr. St. Clair, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Matter is closed. Thank you.